Good afternoon, I'm Carolyn Rye, School Board Chair. This workshop of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is convened at 3:32 PM on this 28th day of September 2021 pursuant to the Virginia State Health Commissioner's Order of Public Health Emergency Statewide Requirement to Wear Masks in K-12 Schools issued August 12, 2021 and Virginia Acts of Assembly Number 1303, Chapter 456, and the CDC's Guidance for K-12 Schools and the School Board's 2021-22 Reopening Plan adopted August 10 of this year. It's determined physical distancing will be used in school board chambers as a health mitigation strategy. Therefore, there will be limited public seating available on a first-come, first-served basis beginning shortly before this workshop session. Members of the public will also be able to observe the school board meeting through live streaming on vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. It's the school board's protocol to break at 5:30 to prepare for the regular school board meeting to begin at 6 o'clock PM. At 5:30, the board will conclude its formal meeting unless members vote to continue until 5:45. The informal session will conclude no later than then to allow the board and the school board administration to prepare for the regular school board meeting at 6 o'clock PM. With that, Madam, we do welcome our present and viewing public. And with that, Madam Clerk, would you please announce those school board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Presently in school board chambers is Chairwoman Rye, Ms. Melnick, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Manning, Ms. Owens, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems.
So we hope to be 100% shortly. So that brings us to school admin matters and reports. Anybody have any, my colleagues have anything to share? Okay, so I'll make a notation that thank you all for getting back to me on your adopted school preferences, and I'll just be asking, there's a small group that we can work in between the two meetings to fill in the remaining blanks. The overwhelming majority of members are keeping their present assignments. So I'll reach out to those few of you at conclusion of this workshop, and that includes myself as well. An update because it was brought up at a previous meeting about staff checking into alternative meeting spaces, and it was acknowledged at the time that the limited options available due to VBTV capability that's required. But staff did investigate the present schedule at the Plaza. What do we call that room, Dr. Robertson or Dr. Spence? Professional Development Center? Thank you. Where we were for our retreat. So there isn't a bit of, quite a bit of teacher training that's already been registered. When we look at November 7th and December 7th, it's possible to have what would amount to half of, if you recall, our summer retreat where we had A, B and C were opened up to us. And at this, for those dates, C, so half of that space would be available to us, which given the present distancing, just grants us a little more space, not much more, maybe up to 18, you know, attendees. So I'm throwing out, so I also want to mention with this that we, the division, of course, all of us continue to track the COVID numbers, and when we, if we find ourselves soon in an area not in high transmission, we can certainly look to relax or remove a layer of mitigation to include school board chambers. But I just need some consensus now as far as these available dates at Plaza. Is it worth the shifting back and forth for those few dates? Do you want to hold them for now and see where things stand when we meet again in October? Is there any strong opinion one way or the other?
I'm sorry, did you say what the date is?
November 7th and December 7th and December 21st.
Okay, nothing in October.
Correct. And it was further noted that some of this, the available space now has been taken up by, it's kind of the, the central office space for the contact tracing team. So that's some space that is not present, why, why the available space for us is more limited than it might have been previously.
I think we should hold the space, have it as an option, but at that point, we're not in a place where we can relax on the standards here. If we need to be a consideration, so if we want to have more participants, if we still have the issue.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Anderson?
I'm sorry, I wasn't paying close attention. I was working on trying to get my computer online in here. But November 7th, and what are we holding this for?
The question is whether to hold a slot for the Plaza Room C of the Plaza P, Professional Development Center, that otherwise known as PDC.
For us?
Yes, for the school board meeting.
Isn't, wait a minute, November 7th, 2021?
It should be November 9th.
November 9th.
Okay, because I was going to say November 7th is a Sunday.
Thank you.
And I will be out of town on that Sunday, so, but I'll be back on the 9th.
And any, any feedback on that?
Fine. I'm good on the 9th.
So is that, Dr. Spence, is that possible? And maybe what we can propose is that if a teach, if the development team comes back to you before that, you know, looking for that date, then we can, it would push up the time where we would have to make a commitment sooner rather than later. Mrs. Weems, I'm sorry.
I was just going to ask, like, how much time do you need for us to, like, totally commit that we're going to use that space, Dr. Spence, to be able to make it happen, or?
I don't know that we have a great answer to that. I mean, we're, if, we'd like you to tell us now that you want us to hold the space so that we don't, we let people know it can't be scheduled for other purposes.
Okay. I mean, I think we should hold it. We may not need it, but we may, especially if, if right before that meeting, we find out we have, you know, 103 speakers, it would be nice to use it. So I, I think we should hold it in case we do need to use it.
So we've heard from three people, I'm, Mrs. Hughes?
Isn't that a normal meeting date anyway?
We're talking about a relocation.
Oh, but we're not talking about change any times. I was looking at it thinking it must be a different day of the week or something like that.
A relocation to accommodate more in-person public.
Good to go, I'm good with it.
So I think that, I think that's, we've heard from enough who seem all consistent with their feedback, so if Dr. Spence or Dr. Robertson, whoever, would proceed with that. And we'll, we'll talk, we'll see where we're at, you know, and each, each meeting we have, obviously, we reassess this anyway. So our next, our first meeting in October will be a touch base point. Thank you very much. All right, and with, with that, we have as our first workshop topic, the second quarter forecast for October, November, December. Dr. Spence, and you all have a hard copy, if you would like to refer to it.
You should have a hard copy, that's correct. So this is, again, just a review of recommended quarterly topics. I will tell you, it's a, just a little bit incomplete right now, but because we're coming up on it, we wanted to at least give you this, the working draft. There's staffing conversation that likely needs to come in here and/or benefits conversation needs to come in here ahead of your budget conversations. And so you'll see the staffing conversation listed for December 7th, and we're working out when the benefits conversation would come depending on everything that we have going on in the rest of the days. I'll also mention that we need to get squared away with, and I apologize for this, on October 26th, you've got a reversion resolution and a resolution concerning revenues over an actual, so that's the sort of true-up resolution with the city revenues. And that's listed for workshop and information and action that night. Obviously, we're going to need to move that around just a little bit, so that's just an oversight on our part, but we'll figure out whether or not we'll move that back or forward, one, in other words, whether or not you'll vote later on that resolution or if you'll vote on that resolution that night, and we'll move the information and workshop back to the previous meeting. But I'll get back to you on that one. Outside of that, this, this just gives you a general overview of some of the topics that we know need to come in front of the board. And as a reminder, for board members, if there's something that's not on there that you're wondering, you know, we've talked about something and it's not on there, please, now's a good time to ask, and or if you'll just follow up, and if there's something on there you have a question about, certainly, we're happy to answer those now.
Just take another moment to look through it, colleagues. Anything at the moment? I real, there's enough here that I think most, some of us at least will look at it more carefully afterwards, but, so do take Dr. Spence up on the, the request if something strikes you after today's series of meetings, or even before you leave today, you can see them.
And we'll certainly update you with any, any changes that are made.
And maybe I can ask, and it doesn't necessarily pertain to budget resolution because, but I know with, with respect to meeting time, meeting lengths, one of the suggestions that came out of our September 1 meeting was just giving more thought before automatically repeating a workshop presentation in the formal meeting. And so I would just ask.
Right. And I think what we talked about, Madam Chair, was that what we likely would do in that scenario would be to do an abbreviated version of the workshop presentation, so kind of the executive summary version of the workshop presentation versus repeating the workshop presentation itself during the information item.
Well, that's certainly one option. Sometimes the abbreviated versions aren't so abbreviated, and that's just sometimes the nature of the beast. So I think it does have to be almost handled case by case depending on the subject matter. But thank you. Okay. All right, then, that brings us to Ms. Pate, our Chief Financial Officer here to discuss American Rescue Plan Act III.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chairwoman Melnick, school board members, and Dr. Spence. This presentation is to provide the board with an update on the submission of our American Rescue Plan, known as SER III, and public comment used to help develop that plan. This first slide is just a real high-level overview. The American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 was signed into law on March 11, 2021. Those funds are to help safely reopen our schools, sustain the safe operation of schools, and address any of the impact of COVID-19 on the nation's students. Our district was allocated 82,000, 82 million, a little over 82.4 million dollars, and the period of availability of those funds began on March 13, 2020, and through September 30, 2023. We also have an additional 12 months of extended time until September 2024 for any carryover obligations of those funds. So generally, we have to determine the allowable use of those funds. Some of those things that we consider is the use of the funds to prevent or mitigate any of the COVID-19 pandemic that it's had on, on students, their social, emotional needs, any academic needs of students. We also look at whether they fall under the authorized uses of SER funds. We do have to consider some cost principles and some audit requirements that we need to look at, and we also look at whether the expenditure is reasonable and necessary. So some of the examples of allowable uses of funds you can see is learning loss, purchasing educational technology, some upgrades to our facilities, PPE equipment, obviously, supplies to sanitize and clean buildings, and other addressing mental health supports and social, emotional needs. In a little bit, I'll address what we actually approved in our application. So one of our requirements is to address learning loss. We are required to reserve about 20% of that 82.4 million in order to address learning loss, and that is through the implementation of evidence-based interventions, and that included a lot of our summer school extended programs, extended day, a lot of those things that we've put into place, and we'll look at those a little bit later. And we also must ensure that those interventions respond to students' academic, social, and emotional needs, and address any disproportionate impact of COVID-19 on underrepresented student Maintenance of equity, this is a set of new fiscal equity requirements released by the United States Department of Education. Specifically, maintenance of equity ensures the following, that districts do not disproportionately reduce state and local per pupil funding in high-poverty schools. So we are required to look at that and do reports periodically to show that we have met that requirement, and we don't, we shouldn't have any issues doing that. Two plan requirements for the SER III application, we kind of looked at these as one is an operational plan, and one is a financial plan. The operational plan is the plan for safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of services. So that plan is available on a website. We had to address in-person instruction, continuity of services, addressing, again, students' academic needs and social, emotional needs. We had to seek public comment on that, on that plan, and we are required every six months through the initial award period to update that plan, seek additional public comment, and make sure that it, to the extent which is applicable, to address adopted policies aligned with updated CDC guidance. On the second plan, that's more of our financial plan. School divisions must have been a plan to describe how the funds were used to implement prevention and mitigation strategies, how we are going to use the 20% requirement for learning loss, how it will use the remaining 80% of those funds, and how it will ensure that funds reserved to address learning loss respond to academic, social, emotional, and mental health for all students, including students' groups. So the planned stakeholder engagement, we were required to find a method to engage meaningful and consultation with stakeholders. We had to provide the public the opportunity to provide input and take such input into account when preparing that application. We invited the community to participate in a brief survey. That survey was open from August 3, 2021, to August 13, 2021, and the community was asked to select options that they would like to see as the focus of how the SER III funds are spent by BBCPS. That survey was put together with four categories. So there was prevention and mitigation strategies, there were addressing unfinished learning, addressing student needs, and other uses for those funds. And under those categories were options or examples that people could choose from, as well as text boxes that they actually could add additional comment. This is a slide that shows our participation. We had a little over 6,700 responses. You can see the majority of them were from parent and guardians, and then the next subgroup was employees, and then from there, the lower responses. Under the prevention mitigation strategies, you can see PPE equipment was the top, support for vaccinations, contract tracing, COVID testing, and then other. On learning loss, they wanted, the top one was for the expanded tutoring programming, providing internet supports to Wi-Fi hotspots, enhanced summer learning programs, and then virtual learning. Under the addressing student needs, the top one came in is to support for our at-risk student populations, our foster care, students experiencing homelessness, also feeding students seven days a week, special education recovery services, and English learning support. And under the category of other uses for funds, it came in at facility improvements, technology, and then other. So examples of items that are included in our approved application, and these are by the categories we just talked about. So you can see, we pretty much stayed with some of our responses where we had pre-PPE, contact tracing, air purifiers, cleaning of the buildings, furniture to support the social distancing at the schools, the learning loss, we did have the tutoring, online subscription, instructional materials, we had virtual learning, Virtual Virginia, hotspot services, there's also was a lot of extended summer programs that went on. Addressing student needs, we had English learner translation services, online subscriptions, instructional materials, and part-time temporary ESL instructional positions. And then other, other, under other, employee costs repaid leave for reasons related to COVID-19, and HVAC upgrades and repairs. And that concludes the presentation. Be glad to answer any questions.
All right, we'll begin with Mrs. Franklin.
Thank you. Crystal, I just wanted to, I just wanted to ask you, so if this is good until 2023, if this is available to 2023, does that mean, because I'm very happy to see that the other includes employer costs for paid leave for reasons related to COVID, does that mean that we are covered for that until 2023?
We can be, we can do that, yes, as long as that's agreed upon by administration, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mrs. Manning?
Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Pate. Is it possible for us to get a copy of the approved application with more details?
Absolutely.
And then I had asked this question at Dr. Spence, I think it was last week sometime, just have we looked into purchasing perhaps some more cameras for the classroom to provide synchronous learning to the students who are out quarantined and are being impacted? This might be a Dr. Spence question rather than you, I'm not sure. So that's, that's my first question.
So I know we have Language, which is an application to provide instructional support for synchronous learning, whether that includes the cameras or not, or additional ones, we'd have to really look at that, but we try to write that application as flexible as we can.
So it's broad.
So that we can, we don't have to amend, we've had to amend more times than we would like, but we try to make it as broad as possible so that we can consider those types of things allowable.
So what are the next steps for the board as far as, do we need to approve the specifics or are the specifics?
No, the application's been approved by the state. We do have some additional information to provide related to the actual operational plan, but that's, that's to be expected because of the nature of ongoing changes in the environment and things like that. So they just want us to provide that additional information, which we're already working on before we can do any additional amendments, but that application's already approved.
Okay, and have we, do we have anything in here to try to address the bus driver shortage?
There is some information on the, I think there's some information on there for the bus drivers for incentives and recruitment.
There's for incentives for people that recommend bus drivers?
Please, please allow her to use the mic for the benefit of our Zooming public, thank you.
There's information in there, so if you were to recommend a bus driver, there's incentives for that, and I think we're working with HR on doing additional incentives.
Okay.
So we could amend the application.
Is that, is that in place right now?
Not right now.
How quickly can we get that in place?
As far as an amendment, I think we could get that within a week or two. As far as HR, I'm not sure.
Anybody in HR have that answer? I mean, this, we're.
Well, they're not in there, but, but as a reminder, the plan launch of that's Q4, so that's, we're upon that. So I think that's imminent as far as the referral program.
Okay, and I had just made a suggestion that could we offer and, and some sort of incentive for current drivers to stay a certain period of time and pay that stipend at the end of that period of time, say, a stipend for staying nine months, as well as trying to recruit people, an incentive for longevity with us to maintain the drivers that we have and to recruit more.
It is an allowable use of funds, and like Charity was mentioning, we would have to do an amendment for that piece, but certainly we can do that. I think the piece of making them stay a certain period of time is more of an HR function, but it certainly is an allowability for this.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just making that suggestion with the, you know, major issues that we're having right now. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right, we thank you.
Thank you.
So now it's time to welcome Mr., well, I guess we're beginning, starting with Mr. Freeman. Good evenings.
Good evening. So Mr. DiMartini's going to come up, and I'll give you the brief. Just as a reminder, this has been on the forecast for presentation. This is designed around a standard Safe Schools, updating what I mean by standards, what a Safe Schools been doing for a period of time. Realize it doesn't specifically address anything that's occurred over the last couple of weeks, but we'll be happy to take those as part of the questions. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. DiMartini.
Do I have my presentation queued up? Oh, there we go, okay, very good.
Good afternoon, school board members, Dr. Spence and staff. Recent events remind us that safety and security concerns did not go away during COVID-19. I'm proud to report that even with the extra tasks assigned regarding COVID, regarding COVID mitigations, Safe Schools remain committed to our primary mission of improving upon security and safety of our schools. We last spoke on March 9, and at that time, we were in a modified learning environment. Since then, we have experienced several unprecedented challenges, of which the BBCPS has worked together to overcome. Pictured is your Safe Schools team. I've had the privilege of putting this team together. The wealth of knowledge and experience is second to none. Our variety of backgrounds allow us to strike the right balance to support our division's needs regarding safety and security. Our three coordinators, left to right, are Tommy Shattuck, a former homicide detective, SWAT team leader, and owner of a private investigative firm; Christie Golden, a 20-year Chesapeake police veteran who served as a detective, public informations officer, and as a member of their internal affairs squad; Brian Loane, who has 20 years of education and served as an administrator at Tallwood and Ocean Lakes High School, along with stints at Renaissance Academy and Larkspur Middle School; Gil Warner is our project manager. Gil is a retired Marine Lieutenant Colonel. He had vast experience with over three, three tours in Afghanistan. His job assignments included serving as an advisor to the Ministry of Defense on security and training matters. Billy Hodges and Ben Gons are our part-time project support personnel. Ben is a retired Virginia Beach Police Department captain with an extensive service record to include SWAT operator, team leader, as well as lieutenant of the CALIA Office. CALIA stands for the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. Billy also is a retired police supervisor and spending most of his career in special operations. Billy served as a SWAT team and K-9 operator and supervisor as a liaison of the Police Department on several citywide operations to include holiday weekends and special events. Of course, it's all kept together by our glue, our administrative associate, Donna Johansson. I'm very proud of that team, and I thought it was pertinent to share with you the team that we have working for our safety and security. The Office of Safe Schools has been tasked with several non-traditional roles and responsibilities over the past few months. During the spring of 2021, we created and monitored COVID-19 assessment inspection teams. Those teams were an overall success in that they assessed the progress of each of our schools regarding COVID mitigation strategies. We also, we were also instrumental in the rollout of the citywide vaccination program. Safe Schools supported our entire faculty and staff, serving as an informational hub and conduit for vaccination scheduling. We assisted over 1,700 employees with that process. During that time, we also saw the need to enhance our security posture at the elementary schools. Elementary schools returned face-to-face in a full capacity, and the secondary schools were in a limited, limited capacity at the time. We've reassigned 52 security assistants from the secondary level to the elementary school level throughout the modified learning environment timeframe. This support would not have been possible without the collaboration and cooperation of our administrative teams, the HR office, and our docile representatives. In an effort to continually improve upon our In an effort to continually improve upon our security assistance program, we have focused our attention on how we can better prepare these staff members. Over the summer and throughout the beginning of the 2021 school year, we have provided our security assistants with a variety of training. These employees are trained in accordance with the Department of Criminal Justice Services mandates and our own in-house developmental courses. Topics provided for instruction by our Safe Schools coordinators included CPI, which is known as Crisis Prevention Institute, and that was a transition away from our MANT program, and that's going division-wide. We taught front desk responsibilities to include Raptor, which is our visitor management program, Genetek, which is our access control and camera systems, traffic direction, CPR, and AED, and we fully implemented the Run, Hide, and Protect program. We also provided a new security assistance manual for all front desk locations. This manual was created by our Safe Schools team and should serve as a resource for our administration and security personnel. It clearly outlines expectations, roles, and responsibilities. In August, we provided administrative training to our assistant principals and principals, assisting the schools with their yearly responsibilities of uploading crisis management requirements while also introducing our newly acquired and implemented Raptor modules of drill and emergency management. In addition to supporting our schools' efforts in managing COVID-19 and providing our faculty and staff with up-to-date and pertinent training, Safe Schools has also taken on several other projects. We are in the final stages of reconstructing our Intranet website, making it more useful and user-friendly for our division. Picture to the top right is an example of the Mass Notification Device. We have installed 39 in 2021, and we anticipate finalizing this project of this emergency management upgrade in 2022. Mass Notification Devices are a more efficient way for us to announce emergencies in our buildings. Our team revised and distributed new emergency response guides that have been placed in each classroom. These guides are a quick reference for staff regarding management of critical incidents. Our coordinators have been working with our administrative teams on the new and improved Crisis Response Team Handbook. The new digital document is streamlined and a more easily accessed crisis management resource. And at the request of the Fire Department and per Virginia code, we have installed 60 knock boxes at 60 different schools, 30 in 2020 and 30 in 2021. Knox boxes are secured, protected cases that house building keys and are placed on the exterior of the building. We anticipate finalizing this project in 2022. The Office of Safe Schools also monitors Securely 24/7. All alerts originating from internet searches conducted by our students involving bullying, violence, firearm violations, depression, self-harm, and suicide are facilitated with the response to our partners in school administration and the Virginia Beach Police Department. Securely is a beneficial resource in identifying children in need of services and providing them the services in which they need. Safe Schools continues to support the city's voter registration and election office by providing voting sites at 54 of our schools. The Office of Safe Schools serves as a liaison to this process and facilitates site selection. We have added the new 19th Street Sports Complex to our reunification plan, giving us a north site, as we still have the Field House as our southern location. Our principals and our office recently completed the DCJS mandatory Virginia School Safety Survey. We recently met with the Virginia Beach Police Department's 29 school resource officers and their respective four supervisors to discuss expectations for the upcoming school year. And as you well know, we provide and coordinate security at each school board meeting. We have continued the fencing project, which was started several years ago, enhancing the perimeter safety of 40 elementary schools and two middle schools. We have completed four phases of this upgraded fence line, and Phase 5 is currently underway. In addition to the above-mentioned new projects, we continue to improve upon our existing systems of electronic security. During the past fiscal period, we added 29 access control devices, taking our total number division-wide to 577. We added 14 new camera systems, bringing our total number of surveillance cameras to 3,202 division-wide. This number does not reflect the maintenance performed on the existing systems. Improving communication within the buildings has also been a project of ours. We purchased and distributed 642 new two-way radios. This required a transition from the old analog systems to an upgraded digital platform. This should improve upon reception in the building and allow for future expansion where needed. We also upgraded all elementary, elementary and middle school computer systems at the front desks. Shown here is a part of the funding that has allowed us to accomplish most of these tasks. $100,000 we acquired in the school equipment grant in 2021 was spent. We will be applying for the same school equipment grant in 2022, as well as the community-oriented policing services grant, also known as COPS. This grant is capped at $500,000 with a local match. We will be working with our business services and budget departments regarding this acquisition. Once deemed appropriate by our Department of School Leadership Partners to transition from COVID-19 safety mitigations to school safety audits, our team will then begin our audit process. In the meantime, we have assembled two COVID mitigation safety assessment teams. They reported yesterday and will begin capturing the data of how our schools are performing with respect to social distancing, mask compliance, contact tracing guidelines that are in place that'll start next week. Any questions for me? We've been busy.
Ms. Owens?
Thank you. You guys have definitely been busy. Could you tell, tell us or tell me a little bit more about how Safe Schools is involved with the monitoring of Securely? Particularly, are you guys the only ones getting those alerts? Are they going to you at the same time that they're going to administration at different schools, or how that works?
Yes, ma'am. The process that we have in place is for Securely to alert our assigned school coordinator. And what we do is we rotate that because that's a 24/7 job. It's weekends, nights. So what we do is we divide, divide amongst our coordinators, so they all take a month. So whoever's on that month is responsible for getting the call, and Securely knows our rotation. So then, once that call comes into our office, then we then facilitate the information to those that need to know. The school administration, the parent, the custodian, whoever it is that's listed on our information. And that's how it goes. And we also share it with Bobby Jameson's teams, our counselors.
And so the Securely team, is that a actual person somewhere in Securely, or is it just a trigger in the system that says, oh, I see this word, I'm going to contact you all?
Securely is a vendor, and I believe they're housed in Missouri, and they have a vetting process. So once they're alerted, then they read through the message and then alert us if it meets the standard. So just a hit of a student writing gun does not necessarily get us notified. There has to be more to it than that.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
So just so you have kind of a vision of what it looks like on a, on a Saturday or a Sunday, our coordinators would get the information from Securely, and then they would have to contact the custodian of the parent, let them know that it was reported that a student, you know, is thinking about self-harm or threat to others and that kind of stuff. And then the notifications from there go on. If it's police department involved, they would be notified. Obviously, we notify the school's principal, so it's extensive use of it.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. I can do one more question. Is there anybody on your team, I guess, that has specialized training in mental health or child development when we're talking about those notifications, especially those Friday night notification about self-harm, and somebody's contacting a guardian or parent? Does the person who's contacting the guardian or parent have expertise or extra knowledge about what, how to address that with the parent?
So the short answer is no. We don't have specific training in that. Our experience as in the police department, we all were CIT-trained. Brian Loane may have some sort of training with the school division in those types of cases, but we don't have specific training in how do you relay Securely information to a parent.
Okay. I do think, and I think I've mentioned this before in the past, I'd like to see, your staff is very impressive in their backgrounds with law enforcement and tactical logistics and all of those things, but I would love to see at least a part-time or a coordinator involved who brings the background of mental health and trauma-informed practices, something because so much of what Safe Schools is tasked now with involves those notifications about self-harm, is looking at the implementation of different drills in the schools, that we want to be mindful about how those drills are impacting children's emotional well-being, and just making sure that we have that integrated in our processes from the top, that mental health coordination piece, and not just as kind of the afterthought that Bobby Jameson's team is going to be notified on Monday when they come back. Just to make sure that we have, have that as tight as we can with moving forward with that trauma-informed lens on, on our processes. So I don't know how that can fit in, but just to put it out there that I would still love to see that integrated somewhere higher at the top for some of those processes.
Yes, ma'am.
Can, we have a few, a few hands here. Who's? Ms., Mrs. Manning and Mrs. Franklin, I saw hands up? No? Okay. All right, so Mrs. Weems, then Mrs. Anderson. Go ahead, Mrs. Weems.
Thank you. So for you, the safety audit, the safety audits that are coming up and the COVID safety assessment teams going out, do the schools know you're coming and when you're coming? And what does that look like? Like, what exactly do you do? I'm assuming you have to stay for a long time to look at kids changing classes, going outside, coming inside, eating at lunch? So can you just kind of tell us what that looks like?
Similar to how it looked in the spring, a little bit less intrusive. We streamlined our checklist that we used in the spring for the same assessment teams, and it's streamlined to focus more on the masking, the contact tracing, and the social distancing. And we have prioritized the gymnasium, cafeteria, the classroom. So it should be less than it looked in the spring, but it should get what we're looking for as far as whether or not our schools are complying with, you know, the mitigations.
Okay.
And we have, we have two teams of three, and they'll start next week. They'll probably do about four schools a day, two each.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask.
So if the schools don't know, they do know now.
That's right. Okay, great, thank you. Looking forward, I hope we get a great report back. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Manning, and then Mrs. Franklin.
Thank you. This is a great summary, and I want to say that I'm very pleased I received an advance notice of a lockdown, and I'm thankful that that's happening now. I think it really prevents a lot of anxiety with our parents, so thank you for doing that. I think some of these things that we're implementing now came out of the audit that our auditor did, and I'm thankful to see that kind of coming out now with kind of the restructuring of our security program, the books that you mentioned, the training. Have we fully implemented that, kind of the restructuring of our security assistance? I know we changed job titles, we had, you know, uniforms. Have we fully implemented all of that?
We're making a lot of headway in that program. As you know, they are site-based, so the security teams work at the individual schools, and they are assigned to the principal. However, we at Safe Schools have stepped up our game as far as getting training to those folks, and we increased, as you know, a few years ago, we increased their, their contract days so we can get them some training. We're using every day available that we have to get them more training. We're continuing to improve upon it by providing that security assistance manual that now is sitting on the desk, which really is a great resource for them. It outlines their roles and responsibility. It gives them instructions on how to, you know, handle certain situations. So yeah, we are definitely improving upon the program as best we can, including, you know, new hires and, and things like that. And then we've also developed new classes for them to take, so we feel like we're going in the right direction.
So kind of like some continuing education? Will they be doing that?
Yes, in service, we would consider in service.
Okay. And then just one, one other question in light of what happened last week with the threats against our schools, and I understand that's not uncommon after a school shooting. And, you know, as a parent, I was one of those impacted. How do we communicate? So if a threat is made on our school, considered perhaps a valid threat, and perhaps that threat is not resolved even into the next day? And again, I know this has to be confidential, and we can only share certain information. How do we communicate to our parents that their kids are safe to come back to school the next day?
There's, there's a process in place when a social media threat comes to our office, and it could come in many different forms. It could come from the police department who discovers it. It could come from a parent who discovers it, administration, students. Unfortunately, in today's world, these are very common, and we have to take every single one of them seriously. We cannot not take them seriously. But as you know, oftentimes, they are, they are meant to exhaust time of those investigating, cause fear in the community, and have very little validity to them. But we can, we immediately send them to our police department partners, and then they start the investigation process. And that is a, you know, they do everything from researching the, the address of the social media outlet, to search warrants, to starting to investigate, you know, at the school with interviewing children, and the admin staff are interviewing children. So they're investigated as soon as they come across our desk.
And, and I know, and I have confidence in, in you all in our Virginia Beach Police Department. I guess what I have some concerns about is the communication to parents. And again, I know you can't give details, but I felt that the, that it was lacking a little bit, and I can share specifics with administration with you later, but I just felt that the comfort level of the parents and the students when this all happened, just the communications could, may have been a little bit better. So I'm just wondering, what is the process to communicate to families? A follow-up, that everything's okay? And again, I know that you can't necessarily give results.
So completely understand your question. So if we thought that our schools weren't safe due to a given threat, we would communicate that. So the way that we're talking, and here's the balance between the communication, because the way that you're wording the question is how do we reaffirm to our families that our schools are safe?
Yes.
Whereas our approach is if our schools weren't safe, we would do something about it.
Well, I mean immediately after a threat. I'm not saying just on a daily basis.
I understand. So this is the, the balance, and, you know, there's a lot of discussion of, do you tell families that our, that our schools are, are safe? It also comes with an implication that they weren't safe before. So this is the balance that we try and work with our communications of letting our families and our students know that we take every threat seriously. We are, have a great partnership with the Virginia Beach Police Department. If there was something that we believed, and it was substantiated, and most of the, well, all of them up to this point of the recent threats weren't deemed to be substantiated, we would take action, and that would be the communication. we would take action, and that would be the communication that you would see, and you would see action taken in those. So, we'll continue to work with you to find the balance, because what it comes down to is confidence from the community of, hey, can families feel confident to, to send their kids, the way you worded was back to school, but from our perspective, the school we had verified that that threat, or we were in the process of verifying that that threat, was it substantiated or not? And the condition of the safety didn't change, it's really the perception of the safety changed based on a social media post.
I'll talk to you after the situation, probably not. I'll give you some specifics, and we can...
Yeah, and we're happy to, to work with you to find the balance here.
Yeah.
But this is the challenge in when it comes to communicating in and around these threats.
Yeah, I just felt that the communication after the threat was deemed to not be substantiated could have been better.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Felton.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez, this is a very impressive team, and I appreciate you giving us background as well. And meeting some of them, I have determined that they have a good community engagement experience, and I really like that component as well. But my question to you is, I see that on your Safe School auditorium, you listed a crisis response team handbook, and is this a self-produced book by, by the Safe Team? Is this your book, or it, was there a panel assembled to put together? And/or what resources was, was used to identify this? Because I know crisis can be a broad spectrum.
Yes, ma'am.
So, how would that, was that produced?
That was part of our intranet overview that we're doing right now. We are updating and upgrading our intranet site. On that intranet site, each school is responsible every year for uploading their current crisis team plans. So, the members of their, of their school who are on the crisis team, they have to upload that yearly, makes sense, right, would turn over into school and, and jobs being switched. So, we actually put together a handbook for them that would streamline that, to make it look universal. So, that way, we didn't have, when you went into our resource and you went into a school, it all looked similar. It's very important in a crisis to have things that kind of look uniformed, as opposed to each school being, you know, kind of being creative and putting their own, their own plans in there. We created a handbook for each school, so that way, in a crisis, if we needed to go to that, that resource, we would know it, we would find.
Okay. So, in other words, you're telling me that the, the officers of the Safe Schools got together and made modifications, and made the criteria?
That's correct.
Okay.
And then we pass that out, we pass that along to our principals during our summer training.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, anybody else?
And it certainly makes sense, we have other manuals for other matters, financial matters, dress code matters, on and on and on. So, instead of each school having to reinvent its own wheel, that it's coming from, that's what we have a leadership team for, and then schools obviously need to adapt based on their school config, their building configuration, right? And that's all factored in, I'm sure.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right, we thank you for your time. So, welcome back, Mr. Freeman, and you're here now to introduce our semi-monthly COVID health and safety mitigation update.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnik, members of the board, and Dr. Spence. Dr. Saltner and I will be providing today's update. Also here with us today is Dr. Nancy Welch. She is the acting director for the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health, and she also serves as the director for the Chesapeake Department of Public Health. I continue to reiterate our appreciation for our partnership with the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health, and as yet another example of that strong partnership, Dr. Welch has shared intentions to attend our school board meetings on a regular basis to stay connected with our work and our progress. Although she will not be presenting tonight, she will be available to take questions at the end of the brief. We are nearing three weeks since we returned to face-to-face instruction, and while incorporating a range of extracurricular activities, and we continue to monitor data to inform our decisions. This is a screenshot from the Virginia Department of Health website, it shows the level of community transmission. As you can see on the right, the Virginia Department of Health is reporting that Virginia Beach is in the high category for level of transmission with 226.2 new cases per 100,000 in the last seven days, and a percent positivity of 10.7. Next to those numbers, in gray, you can see what was reported at the last school board meeting, 277.8 and 14.3%. You can also see the reductions on the graphs, the two graphs at the bottom of the slide. The reduction is good news, but we're still well into the high category for community transmission, and we know that with high community transmission, we will also see cases in our schools. And we have, with 387 positive cases reported in our schools since September 1st. That includes 83 employees who were positive, 302 students, and three others, think visitors. Just a note here, this data is a little different than the data that you have received by email. Data in the emails that you received included cases when specific students who tested positive were not in schools and were not involved in Virginia Beach City Public School activities during potential transmission dates. Including those data would skew the data artificially and inflate the effect on our schools. Therefore, it's not included in what you see here, and we'll continue to improve our data management. Positive cases in schools and activities often result in close contacts being identified. Close contacts are adults who are within six feet of an infected person for greater than 15 minutes in a 24-hour period. For students, the distance can be reduced to within three feet when both students are properly wearing masks. Close contacts are required to quarantine with a couple of exceptions. As a refresher, quarantining does not mean that the person is ill. Quarantining is part of our layered prevention strategy to reduce the spread of the disease. If someone is identified as a close contact, they are required to quarantine for 10 days and to monitor symptoms. That timing is based upon VDH guidance, and I briefed you at the last meeting that we shortened the period from 14 days to 10 days. This change enables students to return to instruction with only a slight increase of risk, and we are monitoring to, we are monitoring to see if there's an impact on our data. So, of the 1,370 close contacts, 995 students and 37 staff were required to quarantine since the beginning of September. Of those 1,370 close contacts, 215 students and 123 members of our staff were not required to quarantine, mostly because they were vaccinated and asymptomatic, but also some who had COVID within the last 90 days and were also asymptomatic. A notable positive here, 123 of our staff did not need to stay home for 10 days because they were vaccinated. Further, 215 students were able to avoid disruption and continue with face-to-face learning, and in many cases also athletics and extracurricular activities. I'll come back to vaccinations. But first, let's talk about connected cases. This is likely the most important data that we are monitoring. It addresses the question, despite all the prevention measures that we have put in place, is COVID being spread in our schools and at what rate? You can see that the Virginia Department, Virginia Beach Department of Public Health has identified 15 connected cases so far this school year. So, out of 387 positive cases in our schools or activities, including 1,370 close contacts for those positive cases, only 15 went on to develop symptoms and test positive. At this point in time, our analysis that our mitigation strategy is working, but as always, we will continue to monitor. One last item about contact tracing. We continue to improve the process. A small group of leaders from both Virginia Beach City Public Schools and the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health met last week to specifically analyze the contact tracing process, and we were able to collaboratively streamline the process. Further, Virginia Beach Department of Public Health has contact tracers that work directly in our professional development center at Plaza Annex, and this has really helped to improve our communication. Finally, we designated 10 central staff members to directly support our school nurses. With all of our students back in five days, in in-person learning five days a week, the burden on our nurses is great, and their additional contact tracing duties are time-consuming. We dispatched these 10 employees as needed to directly support nurses with contact tracing. It helps to relieve some of the burden, but as a reminder, our clinics are extremely busy. Let's circle back to vaccinations. This is also from the Virginia Department of Health website, and it shows that over 44% of our 15, of our 12- to 15-year-old population in Virginia Beach has been fully vaccinated, and almost 54% have received at least one dose. For our 16- and 17-year-old population, over 58% fully vaccinated and 66% with at least one dose. It's a small uptick since our last meeting. We continue to support the opportunity to get vaccinated by hosting clinics at our schools. Here is the same schedule that you saw at the last meeting. We have the capacity to serve 300 in each of these clinics, and after about a week and a half, we are serving, on average, a little over 50. We also have a similar plan ready to begin vaccinating our 11 and younger population at the elementary school sites when authorization is received. Before I turn it over to Dr. Saltner, here's an update on our portable HEPA filters. As of the 24th, 1,675 have been deployed, including all clinics, and isolation rooms, and classrooms at Bayside 6th Grade Campus, and 38 of our elementary schools. We have a bit more work to do, but our maintenance services team has been doing a tremendous job supporting this preventative measure. We project that classrooms, that all classrooms will have a unit by October 29th. With that, Dr. Saltner is up next to share some information from the Department of School Leadership.
Thank you, and welcome, Dr. Saltner.
Thank you. We'll begin by letting you take a look at these numbers. The numbers which you are viewing are from two annual reports, actual counts on the fifth and 10th day of school life body counts. They show variance as student enrollment and withdrawals are in flux during the first week of school. With each passing week, our numbers stabilize. Our next membership count is actually September 30th, where much more accurate numbers will come to us. Our numbers are very close, as you can see, to our projections, off by a mere 948 students. Remind you that 98.25% of our students are virtual and are included in these numbers, they account for less than 2% of our enrollment. Want to also point out that at this time last year, we had about a 40% average of remote students versus this 2% now. Want to take a moment to just talk a little bit more about what Mr. Freeman spoke of, and that is our school-level mitigations. As quarantines increase, so too is the attention Virginia Beach City Public School staff is giving to the seriousness of ensuring adherence to these mitigations. Our central office staff, our frequent visitors to buildings, where we do not hesitate to have frank conversations with our principals regarding any observations we make of non-compliance, or areas where we see that spacing might improve between students in classrooms and the cafeteria. I will tell you from my personal experiences that all staff have taken the approach that it's incumbent on us to ensure the safety of one another and of our students, and if we see something, we speak up. Central office staff, as Mr. Freeman mentioned, is also working with our school nurses to support the contact tracing. When our building-level nurses become taxed or burdened, our central office staff, we have 10 of these who are contributing their time right now to helping during this pandemic. Want to give you another update on extracurriculars as well. I'll give you a moment to study those numbers. While holding instruction face-to-face five days a week, we're also offering a full extracurricular experience for our students. Our students are participating in athletics, clubs, organizations, planning for homecoming activities, and as you can see from the slide, while an extremely low number of athletes have been quarantined, those quarantines can be very punishing to an entire team. What's clear from our contact tracing with teams is when athletes are vaccinated, their teams are generally not affected, because they are no longer considered close contacts if they are asymptomatic and vaccinated. You'll see that with 1,803 students participating, only 9.3% of our athletes and 11 coaches have quarantined at the high school level, but 23 teams have been affected by this quarantine. At the middle level, and I want to remind you that the middle level started a few weeks after the high school, a mere 4.37%, yet, eight teams had been affected by the quarantine. I'm going to let Mr. Freeman return, and he's going to speak about our vaccination clinic.
All right, so before I talk about the clinics, we continue to focus on supporting five days of safe, in-person learning while hosting a range of athletics and extracurricular activities. And we know that athletics come with a high risk of transmission and the resulting infections and quarantines. As Dr. Saltner shared, 9.3% of high school athletes have required quarantine so far this year. That is significantly higher than the 2% of the total student population who have needed to quarantine. Further, these athletic-related quarantines occur during fall sports, which mostly occur outdoors, and we know the risk of transmission increases in an indoor setting. Therefore, in preparation for winter athletics effective November 8th, all high school athletes must verify proof of being fully vaccinated or participate in no-cost weekly COVID testing. This testing will be provided by Virginia Beach City Public Schools through a program offered by the Virginia Department of Health. This also applies to high school athletes who participate in out-of-season conditioning. You have likely seen several school divisions in the state that have implemented similar layers of prevention, including Fairfax County and locally Suffolk. To meet the needs of those who would like to be vaccinated, we have added two additional clinics next week, with follow-up second-dose clinics three weeks later, to support athletes who are unable to attend the two clinics that we are hosting tomorrow and Thursday. Virginia Beach Department of Public Health is providing exceptional support by adding these two additional clinics in very short notice, and we appreciate it. We are just three weeks into this school year, and we are currently seeing good results in limiting the spread of the virus in the school setting. Three weeks is a relatively short period of time. We will continue to emphasize the importance of adhering to our prevention measures and to make adjustments to improve safety for our students and staff. We will now take your questions, and as a reminder, Dr. Welch is happy to take questions as well.
Thank you, and so allow me...
Thank you, and so allow me, on behalf of all my colleagues, to welcome you, Dr. Welch. And I guess whenever the first question is presented, we would ask that you be available to come to the podium. So with that, we'll start with Mrs. Anderson and then Mrs. Hughes.
Thank you. When we know a student has tested positive and they've been out of school for the number of days that they're supposed to be out, do we require a negative test before we allow them to return, and why don't we?
So Mary Shaw is our Coordinator for Health Service. She's on the line. I'm sorry, I said Mary Shaw, didn't I? Sorry about that, Heidi. Heidi Shaw. Heidi Sawala is on the line. Heidi, save me.
This is Heidi.
All right, we can hear you.
Hi. All right, so students do not need to have a negative test in order to return to school?
Okay, I just wondered about that, because I do know that there are requiring that. For example, I'm not going to go into that, but because it doesn't really matter. I just wanted to know if we were doing that. And I do think it's a good idea, but that's on the other, on the other question. So I have a different question now for contact tracing. If a student that has tested positive is also a student with a mask exemption, what students in the class have to quarantine? All students, or just the other students who also have a mask exemption?
Or is it just those students who sit within three feet of that student?
So I'm going to take that one, and Heidi, you can tell me if I say anything that's incorrect. So the standard is when both students are properly wearing a mask, it can go as close as three feet. If either one of those students doesn't have a mask on, it's six feet for greater than 15 minutes in a 24-hour period.
Okay, because I got a call today, today. It was just, and it was about students that were in a special ed classroom, and two students in that classroom have mask exemptions for whatever, you know, medical reasons or whatever. One of them came down with COVID and was in the classroom for an extended period of time. And, you know, I think the teacher was very concerned, because really, all the children in the classroom have been exposed. That child was in the classroom for two days before they found out that the parent, the child's parents had COVID. So then they kept the child home, and then come to find out, this past Sunday, they found out that that student also has COVID. So technically, everybody in the class was exposed, because that student also was, had a mask exemption. So it was just one of those things. I know things like this don't happen all over the city, but I think we just need to be very stringent with that. If a child comes down with COVID and they also have a mask exemption, they're exposing everybody in that class, and if that child happens to go to another classroom for whatever reason, they're exposing other students as well. So I would just, the parent was very concerned, or the teacher was very concerned, and I'm concerned about it too, because I feel like this is one of those mitigation strategies that just wasn't working for this particular classroom. And they didn't want to tell me what school it was. I know Dr. Spence would like to know what school it is. I'd like to know also, but, you know, we need to be very strict about this, especially if it's a child who comes down with COVID and has a mask exemption.
Yeah, so all I can speak to is what you just shared. I don't know any other details other than what you just described. The standard is, in the case that you described, six feet for greater than 15 minutes in a 24-hour period.
Okay.
It's not the fact that you're in a classroom with somebody who had a mask exemption. It's that you're within six feet for greater than 15 minutes in a 24-hour period.
All right.
During their exposure time.
And are the nurses the only people who call in the school? Or you just explained that sometimes nurses become overwhelmed. We do have some staff down here that helps. But like in a situation, in that particular case, where it was only like six or seven students in the classroom, can the teacher call as well, or would you not allow that?
So the process that we have in place right now, Heidi, do you want to take this one? I'm happy to answer it unless you want to take it.
Can you repeat the question? It's a little bit muffled.
If, if it's in a classroom, say, where there's only six, seven, or eight students, a special ed classroom, is the teacher allowed to call, or, or is that strictly the nurse's job to call for notifying parents?
So the current procedure is the identification is done in conjunction with the nurse and the contact tracer. The list of students who are identified as close contact is given to the health department. The health department is making the phone calls.
Okay, thank you. And just one last thing, I just wanted to say that.
I think requiring our athletes, especially for those who are playing indoors this, this winter, it's a good idea to require them to have either a shot or be tested regularly. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Hughes.
Well, I'd first like to say, Mr. Freeman pointed out that there would be clinics for people who would like to get vaccinated. I would assume everyone in that age group who would like to get vaccinated has been. This policy is to be punitive and force people to do it who didn't choose to do it already. And the whole policy is punitive. If you're vaccinated, it doesn't matter who you're around, if they're sick, whatever. There's no test and no quarantine, even though you could be asymptomatic and be passing it. If you're not vaccinated, you could be asymptomatic, have a negative test, and still have to quarantine. This completely defies logic, and I find this appalling. I just don't even understand how anybody in good conscience can force children, who are the safest demographic, to be required to have a vaccination that hasn't even been approved. I mean, one of the few have been approved, but that's not available to anybody. So, and that's it, and I just don't understand this at all. I would like to say, though, one thing that's been illustrated very well is, on the last topic, Ms. Manning asked about, you know, how notification when there's a safety issue. And you pointed out correctly that when you go, you know, repeat and talk about things a lot, it instills fear. That's what we're doing with this. I just don't understand how we're doing this. This is just, it defies all, all logic and all common sense, in my opinion. I don't really have a question. I'm just bothered by this. This is abusive.
So, Mrs. Hughes, are your comments in reference to the division quarantine policy, or this, this announced athlete?
Both.
Okay. Dr. Welch, are you available to respond to either or both?
The bottom-line point that relates to the decisions on the quarantine and the difference with vaccination or non-vaccination relates to risk. All of epidemiology is a balance of risk and benefits. And the individuals who are unvaccinated have almost 100% chance of being able to contract COVID when they are exposed. The individuals who are vaccinated have close to a 10% risk of being able to contract. And as with any communicable disease, be it hepatitis, measles, chickenpox, the factors that go into play in making the decision are the incubation period, which is the time from exposure to the time when you could develop the disease. Just having the virus in your body is not synonymous with having disease. The incubation period is the time it takes for that virus to grow, to multiply, to reach a level where it can spread to your body and cause disease. That's what incubation is all about. With COVID, that averages about five days, but can go up to 14 days. So it varies. And again, in response to your, your question about the 10 days, I guess it was you, sorry. In response to the question about 10 days and testing, it's a matter of balancing, again, risk and benefits. There's no doubt that 14 days, there's a greater assurance that there will be no, no disease associated with 14-day quarantine, because that's about a 3% chance that there might be. As you get down to a shorter quarantine, there's an increased chance, because viruses like people vary. Not all of them are going to reach their viral load level to cause disease at five days. Some, it takes 14 days. Takes maybe 3%. It takes 14 days to reach that level. So the balance that we're always striking in epidemiology is looking at that incubation period, looking at those who have been exposed, looking at ways that we can reduce the transmission, looking at ways that we can protect the community. I'll tell you, as a parent and a pediatrician, I want our kids in school. I am very clear about that. But I want them in school safely. That's the whole goal. And I will say, as a tribute to the Virginia Beach school system, you heard the numbers in terms of quarantine. You heard the number in terms of cases. The key on all of those numbers, to be perfectly honest, is that there was less than 1% of the cases were acquired by in-school transmission. You heard the numbers. They were not small, but I'm telling you, in Chesapeake, we're seeing those numbers too. We are at a high level of community transmission, a high level. But the Virginia Beach schools are at a low level. And that's because you have greater control in the school than you do in the environment. It's pure and simple. So you initiate the control that you have where you have it. And Virginia Beach is doing a good job, when I can stand here and tell you that less than 1% of those cases were transmitted in the school. The others were community-acquired, and of course, the school has no control over that. That's why the quarantine is in place for those who are at that higher risk of exposure. I shared with you the difference in terms of the potential for infection. For those who are at higher risk, and those are the unvaccinated, they're in quarantine because communicable by definition is spread. And these viruses are not lightning bugs. You can't see the viruses. And they get into the environment by things that we do: breathe, talk. Now, there are other communicable diseases that, that expose people in other manners, but in this particular disease, it's aerosol-related. And so it gets into the environment by the things that we do normally: talk, breathe. So this is where these guidances have developed with regards to the quarantine and where your greater risk is of potentially becoming contagious or developing the disease. The whole point of the quarantine is to, is to keep you doing that time period. So if you develop disease and therefore are contagious, you're not in the school. You're not spreading it to your classmates. So school can continue, and I will say, with a less than 1% school transmission, that's very commendable.
Shall we go on with other colleagues? Or Mrs. Hughes, do you want to have any follow-up question at the moment? Okay, Mrs. Manning, and then Mrs. Williams.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. My first one is, I don't understand why we are not accepting natural immunity, having antibodies, when everything I've read shows that that's even more effective than the vaccine. Why aren't we accepting proof of natural immunity to, in lieu of the vaccine in order to be exempt from quarantine?
Actually, most studies show that the vaccine is a better protection than the natural disease.
That is, I've not read that at all. I would love to see those studies, if you could send those to me.
I'll certainly look at that, and I'll send it to Mr. Freeman.
Excuse me, Ms. Melnick? Did you have a comment? You are not coughing. I don't make noises when you're speaking. So I am vehemently opposed to mandating the vaccines. I am not opposed to the vaccine at all. And I believe if you want to get the vaccine, you should. But I also believe in medical freedom, and I do not believe that, I think this is huge government intrusion into medical decisions of children and their parents. And to mandate a vaccine, I understand that you're, you know, allowing testing, but that's still intrusion. I'm vehemently opposed to this. I am also vehemently opposed to administration making this decision rather than the board. That should not be happening. I'm asking the board to address this and take a vote on it, not, not allow unelected folks to make this decision. My next question is, how will testing occur?
How will testing occur?
Ms. Manning, we're going to participate in the Vista K-12 Testing Program, sponsored by the Virginia Department of Health. I have a webinar tomorrow at 2 o'clock. After that webinar, any lingering questions that I and the team have, we'll contact the testing department at the Virginia Department of Health. We'll be assigned a vendor who will provide the tests, provide funding for staff to support the testing program. So at this particular moment, I can't give you the specifics. I should be able to give you the specifics when we meet again in a couple of weeks.
So is it up-the-nose swab? Is it saliva test?
I can't give you the specifics.
And does it include coaches? Are they being mandated as well, or just the athletes?
This is athletes at this time.
Okay, I am completely opposed to this, and I think it's unconscionable that we're doing this.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes, on page three, the top, contact tracing, that one. So there's been roughly 1,030 employees or students that have had to stay home for quarantining, correct?
Correct.
And that has been since the 1st of school? Can you repeat that?
September 1st.
Since September 1st.
For this data.
Okay. But yet, we only have 15 connected cases out of all those?
Yes.
Okay, so we, so that's .01%. So I guess I don't really understand why are 1,030 people having to stay home and miss teaching and miss instruction if only .01% actually have COVID?
That's a good question. That's a good perspective.
That just seems like, if you're talking about balance and risk, that seems way, way, way out of balance.
So that's.
So I, can you help me understand that? That's confusing to me.
Yes, I'm going to let Dr. Welch come up before I let her come up. That's why we're looking at the data. That's what we want to understand. So we've been in three weeks, and this is the result. So that's good news. But we continue to monitor the data before we make, so the suggestion is, why are we doing this? I think what the suggestion is, well, why shouldn't we change it now? We have seen broadly that other school divisions are suffering greatly from COVID, and they're having to close schools, entire schools, to be able to account for this. We have a layered prevention strategy, and we briefed you in August that we're starting with significant layers of mitigation. We start off the school year on the best possible foot that we can, and then we monitor what occurs. So within three weeks, I agree with you, it's really good news. We need to see a little bit more data before we talk about removing one of our layered mitigation strategies and potentially have a consequence that we then can't stay ahead of. So with that, I think Dr. Welch also wanted to share something.
Those 15 cases are cases that were transmitted and acquired in school. So that is a very, you're right, it's very small. That's a compliment. Because the quarantine and the masking, the mitigation layers, prevent more cases from occurring. And if I may, I would like to respond to the questions that came up about infection and vaccination. And if I may, I'll use an example of hepatitis A. Hepatitis A, some of you may recall that there have been times when a restaurant worker had hepatitis A, and so we had to put out large, we. a restaurant worker had hepatitis A and so we had to put out large, we, Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, wherever. The health department had to put out large public announcements for individuals who had frequented the restaurant during certain times when the employee was working. Hepatitis A has an incubation of up to fifty days. And under those circumstances, a decision is made. We want the restaurant to be able to continue to operate, but we want people to be able to come there and eat and be safe. So there is a vaccine. There's a hepatitis A vaccine. So under those circumstances, similar to here in the school, a decision is made that those individuals who have been exposed in intensive contact investigation, it occurs, even in terms of the public for those who came to the restaurant. And those who have been exposed would be offered the vaccine. Yes, if they don't want to take it and they prefer to go to the fifty day incubation period so that we don't have someone come into the restaurant and be exposed to hepatitis, that's their option to choose which one they want. But most persons would choose the vaccine because they want to return to work. And it's the way that that restaurant can continue to operate in a safe way. And having these guidelines on vaccination and quarantine is how the school can stay open in a safe way. We have to understand that communicable by definition is not the same as, say, having a cardiac disease or diabetic ketoacidosis. It's not confined to you. And it's not something that you see when you are giving it to other people. There are certainly some diseases that's not the case, you do see. But in, in these cases, you don't. So these decisions are made again to, to be able to keep the school open, to be able to protect others because you can't see when you are transmitting it. So it's all a matter of ways to reduce the risk with the ultimate goal in mind, in this case, to keep the school open so that children can go to school and be safe. Otherwise, there would, I assure you, there would be lots more cases.
Okay, thank you. And I've got two more. When with the-
Yeah, and so I know you said that, I think the quote was, if you develop the disease, we want to make sure you're quarantined so you don't spread it. But again, I, I go back to what Ms. Hughes said. I'm a little confused because we know vaccinated people are getting the disease. We know vaccinated people are getting the disease a second time, that they've actually got the virus a second time. In some cases, their symptoms are less. I know personally some that got COVID, got the vaccine, got COVID again, and they're sicker than ever the second time. We do know that vaccinated people can carry the virus and have no symptoms at all, but can spread it. So it, it, it just seems very, I don't even know what word to use. And it's not that I want tons more people quarantined, but it just seems like if you're not vaccinated, even though you don't have any symptoms, you feel great, you're still being required to stay home when a vaccinated person that can actually have the virus can then go to school and sit next to students. So that, that is problematic to me. And I think that we've had a lot of emails from parents, you know, with, with the same concerns about their child potentially being discriminated against or treated unequally. So that's just my comment with there. But on the athletic page, how many of our athletes, because I know you said there were a hundred and sixty-seven athletes and eleven coaches that had to be quarantined. How many of them have actually, of our athletes tested for, how many had COVID of those that are quarantining?
I do not have that information in front of me.
Okay. Can, can we have that? Because again, again, I want to see, you know, we saw earlier that we had one thousand thirty quarantining and only point zero one percent have COVID. So I would like that saying with the athletes. I think it's far reaching to mandate a thirteen or fourteen or fifteen year old to get a vaccine. And we're not mandating it, but we're not giving them any choice in order for them to play sports. And I don't think that's right. It should be a doctor, parent, teenager choice, not the choice of an administration to say, if you're gonna play sports, you need to get the shot. I think it's, it's way far reaching and, and I don't think it's right. Thank you.
So let me make sure everybody's clear here. We are not requiring our athletes to get a vaccine. We are giving them two options. They can get a vaccine or they can be weekly screened. Full choice.
Okay, choice, okay. I'm sorry, we're not, but, but the choice is, is very difficult and very slanted in one, one, one position, I would like to say. And again, and I brought this up before, as a coach, collegiate coach, it's like, I'm not making you stay for practice, but if you practice, I know who's here. I'm not making you get the vaccine.
It just seems, it seems like a lot of pressure for fourteen year olds.
So if I may, I had, I pulled out earlier today, because I knew this had come up before as a possibility. And I went, I traced it back to the school board workshop of August twenty-fourth, where testing as needed was noted as a potential for outbreaks and/or athletics. I thought, I think long and hard about this as a, as a parent of two former sports, oh, sports athletes. And I think it, it's a Herculean effort to continue to sponsor sports, varsity sports at the level we're doing in middle school sports in the face of a pandemic. And it's still, it's still, and I think it's wonderful because everybody down to the CDC notes the benefit of extracurricular activity. Most of us parents here, our kids have been, and it's not just the, it's athletics, it's music, it's theater. We know, journalism, on and on. When push comes to shove though, I think academics is always going to take priority. And I would hate as this, as a member of the school board to get to the point where we have to cancel athletics so that we can keep our schools open. And if, if this is, if this is a reasonable approach, particularly for a season of indoor sports, and we know just the distinction now with mask mandates and everything else, outdoor versus indoor. I, I have to believe there's a lot of families who would consider this a reasonable approach to guarantee that their child can, can have that sports season, whether we're talking sixth, seventh grade or, or the, or the even more precious high school years of athletics. And I just would ask that those thoughts be considered. Mrs. Hughes and Mrs. Melnick? And then Mrs. Melnick, okay.
So if we have no data on how many of the quarantine students actually developed COVID, for all we know, we had healthy kids sitting at home for no reason. Is that correct?
We do have that data. I do not have that data in front of me. I did not disaggregate that data for you.
Okay, I misunderstood. I thought you said we don't have that data at all.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it safe to assume we had many, many children sitting at home? Healthy children for no reason?
I could not respond to that. I do not have that information.
Okay. Can you send it to us, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mrs. Melnick? I just want to recap because no matter how much reading I do, it's never going to make me a doctor. I'm not a medical professional. I am the mother of two Division One athletes though, and I know that this same level of protection is occurring at the collegiate level and I appreciate it as a, as a, as a parent. But just to recap, the masks are working, correct? That's what we're seeing. Dr. Welch? That you, you gave us a compliment and commended Virginia Beach City Public Schools on our safety mitigations. And by golly, they're working. And for some, more than others, it's painful. I understand. I'm hoping we turn the corner soon, but just to recap, you're giving us a pretty decent report.
You get an A plus when the education system. And the Mayo Clinic, which is a highly respected research center, has shown some remarkable research that indicates actually at one foot, if the individual who is contagious is not masked, the individual who is, we're going to call it a target for want of a better name, is masked, there's still a thirty-eight percent chance that that target will develop infection. That's better than a hundred percent. But if both parties are masked, it's less than one percent that it will be transmitted. So again, the studies are pretty persuasive in terms of the benefits of the mask. And the experience in both the Chesapeake and the Virginia Beach school systems is certainly extremely impressive.
That's great. Great news. I'm happy to hear good news. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Anybody else, ladies? Any final comments from staff before we conclude? All right then, that concludes our workshop and we will reconvene here at six o'clock. And we thank, we thank everybody who participated in this discussion.